Good evening. So like to start the Town of Air Select Board's meeting for April 6, 2021. Due to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, Governor Baker issued an emergency order temporarily suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Public bodies otherwise governed by the open meeting law are temporarily relieved from the requirement that meetings be held in public places, open and physically accessible to the public, so long as measures are taken to ensure public access to the body's deliberations through adequate alternative means. This meeting will be broadcast live on Channel 8 and on Zoom. The public may participate remotely, but following the call-in information at the bottom of the live broadcast screen. For the Zoom meeting information relating to remote participation, please contact Carly Antonellis, the Assistant Town Manager, at atm@air.ma.us or at 978-772-8220, extension 100, prior to the meeting. We can start by standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to their republic, to its citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. All right. Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda as it was presented for this evening?
I have none.
Any adjustments? I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Seconded.
Okay, Board Memberhood, how do you vote?
Aye.
Board Member Livingston, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Chair votes, aye. Agenda is approved as presented. I did just have one announcement this evening, and that is that on Wednesday, April 14, at 6:00 PM, there will be a public information session hosted by the Town of Air and Catania Oils. This forum will provide information regarding the upcoming tax increment financing proposal being considered at the April 26, 2021 Annual Town Meeting. So it'll be an online meeting. For call-in information, please contact 978-772-8220, extension 100, or atm@air.ma.us. Great, thank you. First order of business is for public input. And it would ask that if there's anybody on the line for public input for any of the items that are on this evening's agenda, if they could please speak now and ask their questions now, and we'll address those questions during the time on the agenda. Okay, so not hearing any public input. Did we get, end up with the quorum yet for the Finance Committee?
We have not. Selby is logging out, logging back in. He's going to try to come back in.
Okay. So, Robert, what would your suggestion be on?
Mr. Chair, what I would suggest, obviously, the next items are from the town engineer that don't require the FinCom, so why don't we wait and see if Selby can get on, take up the engineer's items, and then let's see where we're at on the FinCom, they can call to order.
Okay. All right. So we'll just go a little bit out of order and...
Mr. Chair, just one thing, just so you're aware, I keep getting an error message, a Zoom error message, so in case there's an issue, I just wanted to let you know that I don't know what's going on with Zoom tonight, but I just wanted to make sure everyone knew.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so then we'll move to the next item, which will be the Town Engineers Report. Hi, Dan, are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you tonight?
Pretty good. So yeah, I got two agenda items tonight. And the first is the street acceptance for town meeting that we, has been brought forth, and we're kind of continuing through the procedure for that. So in my memo to the board, I attached a memorandum and an order of layout that's to be executed by the board tonight, recommending the board accept Trevor Trail and a portion of Pleasant Street Extension. These are part of the Riley Jane Farm subdivision. So the DPW did notify all the butters of the time and location of this meeting. And we did also, in the packet, I included the Order of Layout, which was prepared by Town Council. The next step after the board were to vote this Order of Layout, signing this document would be the town, the document would be filed with the town clerk, and then it would go to a town meeting vote. The developer is still working on a few punch items, so if those aren't completed by town meeting, we would withdraw the article at town meeting. So that's the current status of it. Just to note, too, the previous, the board did vote previously to the intent to lay out the street, which then referred it to the planning board. And at their March 23 meeting, the planning board recommended accepting these sections of road that are in the document. So we recommend executing the Order of Layout by the board.
Any questions, Chancellor Scott?
No questions.
Okay, I didn't, I don't either. We'll entertain a motion if...
I'll make a motion for the board to approve the Order of Layout execution for Trevor Trail and Pleasant Street Extension.
Seconded.
Okay, Board Memberhood, how do you vote?
Aye.
Board Member Livingston, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the Chair votes, aye. So the layout is approved.
Okay, all right. And my second item, which is kind of a brief overview of the Town Meeting Warrant articles that I've brought forward. One is the Jonathan Drive Water Utility Easement, and also the Stormwater Bylaw Revisions that we have. I put together a really quick PowerPoint. So I could, I'll share my screen with that. Let's see, share. Do you see my PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, now we do.
Okay. All right. So first, Town Meeting Article I have is the Jonathan Drive Cross Country Water Main Easement. And just a brief summary of the project scope, so we're looking to install cross-country water main to create a loop in the town's water system. I'll try to zoom in here, but the northwest portion of town is really on one big dead end. So having this loop from the Riley Jane Farm subdivision to Jonathan Drive will increase our water quality, and we'll have better flows in those areas. So that's the purpose of it. We, what is it, Annual Town Meeting 2018, we appropriated monies for this project, and now the developer of Riley Jane Farm has installed the water main to his limit, and so we're moving forward with our project. So the purpose for the Town Meeting Warrant article is, we do have to pass over, let's see, some land here. There's, if you can see my mouse, this purple dashed area is the easement we're looking at. So this section goes over 29 Jonathan Drive, which we actually already have an easement for that. The section highlighted in yellow here is what the Town Meeting Warrant article is about. That's the DCR rail trail, which is Article 97 land, which is held in conservation. And if you do any disposing or disposition of that land, there are many requirements for that. So one of the requirements is a town meeting vote to support the disposition. So the easement for the water main is what we're bringing forward to the town meeting. There's also a section here, which is over, or underneath the national grid power lines, and I'm working on the easement for that, and I don't anticipate any issues with obtaining that. So kind of in brief, the Commonwealth, that of Mass, EOEA, Energy and Environmental Affairs, Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, if you have the firsty, their disposition policy, Article 97 disposition policy requires this town meeting vote to support the land disposition. And then after that, we also have to compensate DCR for, in an equal or lesser value fashion for the real estate that we are taking, which is the easement. So there will be an appraisal to base that on. So if you look at my final bullet here, what's next? So first step, we do the town meeting vote April 26. Then there's also special legislation required that has to pass the state legislature and be signed by the governor. And then at that point, we would work with DCR and DKM on the appraisal and compensation for the easement. The other bylaw revisions I have, or the other Town Meeting Warrant articles I have, are the Stormwater Bylaw Revisions. So these are required by our MS4 permit. And just kind of a quick outline, the MS4 permit, our stormwater permit, has six minimum control measures. That's how it's structured. And control measures three, four, and five, we have bylaws for that have been in place since 2008. So illicit discharge detection elimination, construction site stormwater runoff, and then post-construction stormwater runoff. So there's many changes in the updated MS4 permit. I'm not going to read through all these, but we are updating the bylaw and regulations to meet that. And here's a little background on our MS4 permitting and bylaw history. So in 2003, our first MS4 permit was issued by EPA and DEP. In 2008, we adopted our bylaws to meet that first MS4 permit. In 2010, some minor amendments were made to those bylaws. In 2018, the second MS4 permit was issued by EPA, which is the one we're working off of now. And then in 2020, we adopted regulations for the Niptys Phase 2 bylaw. That kind of got, fell through the cracks and hadn't been done. So I took a, you know, worked forth to get that done. So by June 30th of this year, we have to revise the bylaw and regulations to meet the requirements of the new MS4 permit. So that's the deadline we're looking at. So what we did, we took advantage, we had assistance from Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition, which we're a part of. They had a consultant help us, and I'll show you on the next slide. We established a work group. I did provide an update to the Select Board on December 21, and the work group drafted the revisions. Actually, I had a public informational meeting on March 15, where I presented the bylaw revisions, and I made the documents available for public comment for two weeks, from March 15 through the 26. Oops, too far. So Central Mass Regional Stormwater Coalition, which we're a part of, on the right, you can see a map of the towns that are a part of it. But Arcadis Engineering put together a memorandum, and also did some recommendations for, or made some templates for the bylaws and regulations. So the work group consisted of myself from DPW, a member of Conservation Commission, good planning board, residents, and a consultant working on the revised regs. And then the last couple slides here are just a summary of what edits we have for the bylaw revisions. We added Zone 2 critical areas and impaired water bodies. Zone 2 critical areas are water supply areas, our public water supply protection areas, and impaired water bodies, which we have many for phosphorus identified in the pond study, and also the Nashville River is impaired for phosphorus. We revised the land disturbance thresholds, kind of, you know, to obtain, we haven't really been receiving any permits at all with our high land threshold of 40,000 square feet. It's almost an acre of disturbance. So we revised that, as most other towns are doing, down to 20,000 square feet. We also added some more land disturbance thresholds here. So it's a property that already has a lot of imperviousity area, 5,000 square feet. If they increase that by 30 more percent of a net increase, then they'd have to come forward for a stormwater permit. And like I said, the Zone 2 critical area and impaired water bodies, we added 2,000 square foot disturbance in those areas. And then we also just kind of clarified, anything under site plan review or subdivision will need, will require stormwater permit. The permit is broken down into minor and major projects, but that will be broken down in the regulations. We took that out of the bylaw. And then we also added the right to enter property to assess and repair. And then Article 48, the illicit discharge bylaw, there was very little changes needed there, but we added two items to the non-stormwater discharges, global non-stormwater discharges. And then for adopting regulations to that bylaw, we added the planning board, and DPW Superintendent and/or the planning board may adopt regulations. So that's kind of a quick rundown of the warrant articles. So I don't know if you have any questions or want to discuss further. Let me stop, share.
Thanks, Dan. Janice or Scott, any questions on the warrant articles?
I have none.
No questions, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
It's a very thorough job. All right. So that, that was it for you, correct, Dan?
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Before, just want to check on... With Mark, no, still no quorum, correct?
Correct, and it doesn't look like we will have one.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, Robert, sorry.
Yeah, so Mr. Chair, we, well, a couple things. So it looks like there isn't going to be a confirm, a quorum of the Finance Committee. So obviously, the Finance Committee cannot call to order or take any action until there is a quorum, and we've never had this happen before. So with that said, I'd also offer that the Town Meeting Warrant is the sole purview of the Select Board anyhow, so that the FinCom would, we have traditionally had them, if they wanted to, to take positions on the finance articles and so forth. Since there isn't a quorum, what I would propose is that the Select Board proceed with the review of the warrant, and legally, you approve the warrant, as we have a timeline to uphold. And with respect to the Finance Committee, I'd recommend that under Article 4, which is the omnibus, where it says Finance Committee, we put "to report at town meeting." And so the Finance Committee, of course, can report on the budget or make any, you know, statement on the budget at town meeting, or if members of town meeting have questions with the FinCom. And then on all of the other financial articles, where that's not, it's not legally required, that's a, there's a Finance Committee position, we could just leave those blank. And again, of course, the Finance Committee at town meeting could speak on any of those. So that's what I would propose in interest of the fact that the warrant does need to be approved to go to print and mailing, and that we don't have, it doesn't look like there's going to be a quorum. Obviously, through you, the, the members, the two members that are here through the Chair could, you know, offer input and so forth, but they can't take any formal position. So I would propose that we go through the review, that the board ultimately, you know, takes its positions and ultimately approve the warrant to move on to town meeting. Under Article 4, we'll put Finance Committee to report at town meeting, which it can do, and then on the others, leave those blank. But if there are any questions, obviously, the FinCom can speak at town meeting.
Okay.
That's what I would recommend.
That's, sounds good to me. I'm glad you stated that this hasn't happened before, so I don't feel foolish for not knowing, like, what to do.
Not only has, and it's important to note, not only has it not happened before, but it is not a legal requirement for the approval of the Town Meeting Warrant, including the omnibus budget. Under that one, of course, we'll put "to report at town meeting" from the FinCom, and of course, we're going to be doing a presentation on the budget at town meeting. But it's important to note that is not a legal requirement.
Okay, perfect. All right. Well, then, that brings us to the review and approval of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant. And I'm just going to ask ahead of time, as the items are being presented, if we could just go through the entire thing first, and then hold any questions for particular article items until afterwards, if that's okay.
Okay. And Mr. Chair...
Oh, I'm sorry, Janice.
A quick question. So you want us to, like, say, pass or something, so we know which ones we want to back?
Sorry, yep, we can just say pass.
Okay, no problem.
Yeah, that's, Mr. Chair, that's a good point from Selectman Livingston. So in the interest of time, we'll read each article title, and if members say pass or raise their hand, means we're going to come back to any questions on that article. Okay?
Yep.
All right. So what, just to begin, just real quick, and I am joined by the Finance Manager on, on the budget piece. We'll go through the warrant, as mentioned, just say pass or raise your hand, and we'll make a note and come back to it. When we get to Article 4, which is the omnibus, we'll give a brief overview of that. If that's the will of the board, or we can come back to it, whatever your preference is, if you want to come back to the budget under number four, just let me know. I just want to also emphasize, I want to thank everybody, the Select Board, the FinCom, everybody that's been involved in the FY22 budget process and town meeting process, especially during this time of a pandemic, with all of the challenges, including some that we've had tonight. Effective tomorrow, there's going to be a town meeting webpage on the town's website, and we'll make it front and center. And we want to encourage people to visit that webpage. We'll have all of the documents supporting the articles, have all of the information related to town meeting. So it's a good resource. It'll be town meeting webpage. The second piece, we've already had the 2020 budget webpage, that will continue to be populated. So when you go to the website, the 2020 budget webpage will have all things budget. The annual town meeting webpage will have all things related to town meeting. Additionally, we will start after tonight with the articles of the day, where each day we feature a couple of the articles on the warrant, where we give a synopsis about, sort of a layman's summary of what the article does or doesn't do, and it also has the links to the supporting material as we move forward. Finally, if there are any questions, as we're getting, leading up to April 26, we want to encourage the public to contact members of the Select Board, my office, department heads. If you have any questions on any of the articles, any of the material, we want you to have the information coming into town meeting. Finally, at town meeting, you'll see, as we go through some articles, we'll have brief presentations to inform the public. We will also have at town meeting, the Budget Book, which will talk a lot about aspects of the budget, and we will have the annual town report as well. So just an overview. So the first item you'll see in the packet is, there is a special town meeting warrant for a special town meeting at 7:00 PM. It's a single article. It's the Ambulance Enterprise Fund. The Select Board discussed this at length at the March 30 meeting. It's to correct a shortfall in the ambulance enterprise for FY21. It's a single article, and it's a special town meeting, because we need to correct that in this fiscal year. At the conclusion of that, at 7:05 or later, it can start later, depending on the first, is the annual town meeting warrant, which you have. Article 1 is the salaries of elected officials. Article 2 is the contract funding for the air police patrolman's patrol contract. And as it says in the note, there will be a brief presentation made at town meeting. We go over the first year costs and the costs of the three years.
Hey, Robert, I hate to interrupt you, but I just noticed Terry Harville is logging in
Okay.
to the meeting. So if you wanted, if they wanted to call to order, I just wanted to give you a heads up.
Okay.
It's under Melinda Webber, but he'll, he'll change.
I get to change. We gotta change.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, so, okay, Mark, if you want to call to order the Finance Committee?
I call to order the Air Finance Committee on the 6th of April at 6:35 PM.
And just a point of order through the Chair, Mr. Smith, can you just identify by name the members present?
Sure. Myself, Mark Smith, Terry Harville, and Lou Conrad, members of the FinCom.
Thank you.
So with that, Mr. Chair, sort of strike what I had said earlier. So with the FinCom present, with Terry present, we're going to go through the warrant, and then if there's any questions, members of the FinCom Select Board, raise your hand or say pass. And then if the FinCom would like to take positions, recommend, not recommend, a report at town meeting on the articles. We can do that when we get to it. So we just finished the special town meeting warrant for Mr. Harville's benefit, Article 1, the Ambulance Enterprise Fund. And we just started on the Annual Town Meeting Warrant. Article 1, salaries of elected officials. Article 2 is the contract funding for the police patrol contract, and there will be a brief presentation, as there always is at town meeting, on the first year costs, which this article seeks to approve, and then an overall analysis of the three years of the agreement. Article 3 is the contract funding article for the Communications Division of the Police Department, the dispatchers. Article 4 is the omnibus, and I'm assuming you want to come back to the budget or do it now?
If we could come back to it.
Okay, so Article 4 will come back as the omnibus. Just to point out, there is always a presentation on the budget given on Article 4 after it's read. Article 5 is the Air Shirley Regional School District Assessment. Article 6 is the Neshova Valley Technical Vocational School Assessment. Articles 7 through 10 are the Enterprise Fund articles, and you'll see, in the warrant, it says "handouts will be provided." We may change that to the Budget Book, because they've migrated to the Budget Book, but at town meeting, there'll be information available on the Enterprise Funds. Article 7 is the solid waste. Article 8 is the ambulance, and this is the ambulance for FY22, not to be confused with the special town meeting, which addresses FY21. Article 9 is the sewer enterprise. Article 10 is the water enterprise. Article 11 is a borrow. Article 11 is a borrow article. It's the capital budget requests. I want to point out that the Capital Planning Committee has a webpage on the town's website that has all of the presentations. We'll probably migrate that information to the town meeting webpage I talked about. Also, all departments are prepared at town meeting to present on the materials, but Article 11 is for the items that we will be borrowing for, as the board and FinCom are aware, and for the public, for the financial policies. Any item that's over $40,000 or so, we try to look to borrow. If it's under $40,000, we try to purchase outright. So these are the borrow requests. Article 12 is a transfer article. These are the capital budget requests that we will be purchasing directly from Capital Stabilization, and they're items at $40,000 or below.
I'm passing on that article.
Pardon?
I'm putting it on the list of ones that I want to talk about.
12?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Article 13 is a transfer of receipts received for borrow for facilities, police station, HVAC replacement. So I want to just point out explanation. If you look on Article 11, the third item from the Facilities Department, there is a, there was a request made embedded through Capital Planning to replace the HVAC system at the police station. This is the original 1996 system. It's beyond its life. It's beyond its life and needs to be replaced. Based on the information for the total replacement, it's about $114,000 is the total. You'll see two asterisks. We're looking to borrow $52,565. And then on this article, Article Thirteen looks to transfer $92,435, and this is from general fund receipts that we that are remaining from a previous premium on a bond issue. And I know the Finance Manager, he can explain that in more detail if there are questions. So the total estimate of the HVAC replacement project is $145,000. We're looking to borrow $52,565 under Article Eleven, and the balance, the $92,435 to come from this article, which is the remaining funding from a previous premium on a bond issue paid to the Town. Article Fourteen is a UDAG replenishment of $230,000 from free cash for the Worthingdale Depot Square eminent domain settlement. This is the final of three payments that have been authorized by Town Meeting to resolve this issue. Article Fifteen is the Town's Post-Employment Benefits Fund article, and based on the recommendation of the OPEB Board of Trustees, looks to put a total of $300,000 in post-employment. $122,000 is coming from this year's meals tax with the balance of $178,000 from free cash to get to the $300,000. And the OPEB Board of Trustees also has a webpage. You can go, and the materials are there as well on this recommendation. Six, now we get to the raise and appropriate articles. Article Sixteen, the first year's interest for the General Fund borrowing, $33,368. That's the, to borrow really for the items under Article Eleven. Article Seventeen is the funding for aquatic weed control for the Town's ponds, $30,000. Article Eighteen, funding for the Conservation Fund, looks to put $5,000 into the Town's Conservation Fund. Fund was previously established by Town Meeting for the purposes of acquiring open space and conservation land. It's about $500,000 initially put in that, and Town Meeting the last few years have been putting about $5,000 in. Article Nineteen, matching funds for the firefighters' grant in the amount of $5,000. Obviously, if they, they're usually successful in getting the grant. If for some reason they don't get the grant, the $5,000 would revert back. Article Twenty is the matching funds for Green Communities Grant for the LED lighting upgrades to the fire station, library, and police station in the amount of $26,000. And you can see in the explanatory note, this is the matching funds. The total grant is $110,369, and this is to convert all of the lighting at the fire station, library, and police station to LED. We did this a couple of years ago to Town Hall with much success. Again, if we do not receive the Green Communities Grant, the $26,000 would revert back. Transfer Articles. Article Twenty-One, funding of the Reserve Fund for future payments of accrued liabilities for compensated absences. This was created at the last annual Town Meeting, was to adopt the statute and create the fund. This is for, to fund retirements, largely retirements or compensated absences. It looks to put $50,000 to fund it. Article Twenty-Two, the forward funding of the Town's Pension Assessment in the amount of $300,000. This is the second consecutive payment. The other one was done at the October Fall Town Meeting. As you can see in the note, for everyone's benefit, if we forward fund the pension assessment to the Town with two consecutive payments of $300,000, this would be the second. We would realize savings about $1.3 million through the fully funding period of 2035. And again, we'll have the information that was done in previous presentations on that on the webpage. Article Twenty-Three is the Stabilization Fund. It seeks to transfer a total of $795,607 in free cash, putting $5,607 to stabilization and the balance of $790,000 to Capital Stabilization. Pass? Okay, the pass, yep. Article Twenty-Four is the Community Preservation Act from the Community Preservation Committee. This is sort of the standard article required each year from the committee. And then Article Twenty-Five, also the Community Preservation Fund, the transfer of funds, looking to transfer about 12, to transfer $12,000 for administrative and due diligence costs. Again, two sort of perennial articles we have. General Business Bylaw Articles. Article Twenty-Six, the TIF Tax Increment Finance Agreement for Catania España Corporation and JR Realty Corporation. As mentioned, there's going to be a public forum on Wednesday, April 14 at 6 on Zoom on this. There's also going to be additional information put on the Town Meeting webpage that I mentioned, including some materials from the company, and there will be a presentation made at Town Meeting as well. Article Twenty-Seven is the Transfer of the Woodlawn Cemetery to the Town of Air. I want to point out a couple of things in the explanatory note, the key, and I mentioned this at both presentations to the Select Board, and there's going to be a presentation at Town Meeting on this. But if this article passes, the Town would then conduct all appropriate due diligence prior to the acquisition and report back to the Fall Special Town Meeting in October of 2021. So it's a two-part process for everybody's benefit. The first part on the Twenty-Six is we're looking for authorization from Town Meeting to proceed with the transfer. We will do all of the due diligence, meaning the audit of the funds, the maintenance plan, develop everything, come back to Town Meeting in October of this year for approval from Town Meeting to complete the transfer, and we'll explain that in the presentation. So just so we're clear that on Article Twenty-Seven, it's not a done deal on the 26th of April. It's the first step in a two-step process, and we'll touch upon that in the presentation. Article Twenty-Eight is the Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw. As many will require, recall, the Town Meeting in the fall adopted the statute and said they would be back in the spring, which they are with the Affordable Housing Trust Bylaw, which is here in the, printed in the warrant. And I'm told through the moderator, there may be a brief presentation from the Chair of the Affordable Housing Committee on that article. Article Twenty-Nine is the Jonathan Drive Cross Country Water Main Easement that the Town Engineer talked about this evening. That presentation will also be available to the public, and if needed, we'll be prepared at Town Meeting to explain further. Article Thirty is the Nippides Phase Two Stormwater Bylaw Amendment. And as the Town Engineer mentioned earlier this evening, this bylaw amendment is required to be in compliance with the Town's MS4 permit. And again, we'll make sure his presentation is available to the public and also at Town Meeting to explain that. Article Thirty-One is the Illicit Discharge to Municipal Storm Drain System Bylaw Amendment. And again, as presented tonight, this is to meet our regulatory requirements of the MS4 permit. So both Articles Thirty and Thirty-One, as mentioned by the Town Engineer, we need to update to be in compliance for the permit, and we need to have that for July 1st. So hence, both of these articles, I know there's a lot of words in there, so we'll be prepared on that. And then Article Thirty-Two is the Street Acceptance of the Pleasant Street Extension Portion and Trevor Trail, as the Town Engineer talked about tonight. Ultimately, it'll take a vote of Town Meeting, and it's important to note that the information, as the warrant reads, will be on, available through the Town Clerk's Office and also on the Town's website. So as we are leading into Town Meeting, if folks want to see the map, what it looks like, the meets and bounds, that information will be available, and we'll be prepared to answer any questions at Town Meeting. And then the last article after Thirty-Two is a Petition Article. It's an amendment of the agreement between the Towns of Air and Shirley with respect to the formation of a regional school district. And for the public's benefit, the Select Board talked about this at length at their meeting on March 30. This is a petition article that, just in a nutshell, for everybody's benefit, the regional school agreement between Air and Shirley can be amended by two methods. The first method is by a two-thirds vote of the Regional School Committee. The second method is by a petition, which this is. If an individual can secure 10% of the registered voters in either Air or Shirley, in this case, it was Shirley, and they're verified by the Town Clerk, in this case, the Shirley Town Clerk, and they're reviewed by the Secretary of the School Committee, which was the case here, then this appears on, on the warrant. And this article was brought, the signatures were secured by Mr. Jim Quinty, a Shirley resident. They are 10% of the Shirley voters. And the article is here, seeking to amend the regional school agreement to change how debt is incurred. It would have to pass both in Air and Shirley Town Meetings and then approved by the Commission of Education to go into effect. So this article is not sponsored by the Select Board. You see, it says sponsored by petition. The Select Board and the FinCom may choose to take a position or not on it. There were no citizens petitions filed by the deadline set by the Select Board of Friday, April 2 at noon time, as confirmed by the Town Clerk. So that is the warrant. So I know we have a pass. We're going to come back. We'll go to the Omnibus, Number Four. There's a pass on Article Twelve by Selectman Livingston and a pass Article Nine, no, excuse me, Article, the Stabilization Article. So on the Omnibus, Article Four, and just to point out, we will be giving a presentation, an overview presentation on the Omnibus at Town Meeting. You have the insert in, the insert that will be included on the Omnibus. The couple points. Number one, the, this year, we're not using any free cash to balance the Omnibus budget. The Omnibus budget totals 600, totals $16,251,201. It represents a $624,900 increase over FY21 or a 4% increase. Keep in mind that the Reserve Fund is being increased to $300,000 due to COVID and from $150,000, so that represents a 1% increase in and of itself. Mr. Chair, I don't know, do you want to go through the lines of the Omnibus insert or there specific questions on the budget? And I, I see that.
Yep, Janice?
So I, I have one question on Department 500, on the Council of Aging. So I know we said we're not, you know, the van coordinator position is not being funded this time due to COVID-19, but with COVID-19, the pandemic's starting to end. Do we feel confident that we're not going to have to, that we're not going to have a problem down the road?
So on that, and I've talked at length with the COA Director who is here, it's important to note that right now there is the, the Director, this, the Director, the Van Driver, the Nutrition Coordinator, that's filling sort of two functions. There's a vacant position that is funded. On the van coordinator position, at this time, the position still exists. It's not recommended for funding at this time, but that's part of the reason as we move forward in increasing the Reserve Fund. And I know that the feeling was at this time not to fund that position. I would argue that's still our position right now in the pandemic. Of course, if that changes, then we will address it moving forward.
Thank you.
Yes, through the Chair.
May I address, may, may I address Janice? At this point, at this point right now, where we're moving into a busier season, the van is getting busier, and I do foresee having to bring somebody up. We only have one driver, and that's it. So I do foresee having to have somebody come on in the next fiscal year. And I know where all the questions are, but things are really changing at the Council on Aging. They, they really are every day, every day. So that's just my opinion.
Great, thank you.
And then, Mr. Chair, on, on the Omnibus, so draft, what changed from Draft Three until tonight, as mentioned before? So we were at 3.45% and go to 4%. What changed from draft Three to this final draft? The two biggest items were the Patrol Contract and the Dispatch Contract, so Article Two and Article Three. And the Patrol Contract is $43,477, and the Dispatch Contract was $26,244, both within the metrics for negotiation, but that was the significant increase. And then we do have to budget for the overtime for that, and of course, overtime, we budget, we can't exactly predict all of the overtime, but there's about $8,000 in overtime costs. And then the last increase was the Fire Casualty and Liability Insurance by about $7,000. We'd been talking about getting finalized numbers on there, and it's really being driven between the added vehicles and the new fire engine and some increased costs on that. So really, about the $80,000 change from Draft Three to Draft Four was largely the two contracts and that insurance change.
Thank you. Those are, those were my questions. Scott, do you have any questions on the budget?
No, no questions. Thanks.
And Janice, did you have any more questions for the budget?
Nope, that one was it. Thank you.
Okay, great.
And Mr. Chair, since there is a quorum of the Finance Committee, since we're on Omnibus Four through you, I don't know if there's any questions from members of the FinCom through you on the budget.
This is Terry. I have no questions.
Mark, I have no questions.
Okay.
This is Lou. I don't have any questions either.
All right, great. Thank you, guys.
Okay, so then we, there was a pass on Article Twelve by Selectman Livingston.
So actually, I passed on Number 11, 12, and that's okay, and 23, and they're all kind of related. Okay, so we had talked about this last week, was it last week? Yes. And so, and of course, you know, I've been contacted by a resident, and I've also done some thinking. So I just want to kind of go over this again as far as our plan for free cash and how we were going to spend it. So Article Eleven is obviously the borrow article. I know that we get very, very low interest rates and whatnot, but we also have an opportunity to maybe use free cash for a couple of those borrow articles. The same thing on Article Twelve. Article Twelve, so Article Twenty-Three, we'd be putting money into capital budget, Capital Stabilization, and then taking it out to pay for Article Twelve. So I mean, we've kind of got two articles doing basically the same thing when we could maybe do it a little differently. And then Article Twenty-Three, I think maybe our amounts are wrong as far as the DIBY young up as to what we're putting into the two stabilization funds. So I would just kind of like to kind of go over that a little bit again.
When you, Janice, I'm sorry, I was just gonna, when you're saying for Article Twelve about, you know, putting in and taking out, is it mostly like just a wash, like?
Well, I mean, it, it almost comes across. Well, I mean, it, it almost comes across that way. I mean, that, that's not a big deal. You can put it in, you know, the one fund and then just kind of have it going out the same way. Or you could have it clearly, hey, we're going to use free cash, boom, pay for these items. Which, you know, is also very clear to a resident of like, hey, I know exactly how we paid for that instead of putting it over here and then transferring it over there and whatnot. Um, the borrow articles, again, Lisa always makes sure she gets us wonderful, wonderful rates. The treasurer, everybody works very hard to get wonderful rates, but why not use cash? We would just pay for some of it right out rather than saying to the town, we want to borrow, because it, you know, it doesn't always come across well.
Well, do you think it's more of a educational thing? Like, I mean, I think like Scott had explained before, I think it would be kind of, if we have an opportunity to use borrow funds at a zero or near zero interest rate, now, that would be wise, and who knows, you know, when other projects come up, that, that opportunity might not be there. So it could be a cost savings thing, like, and a wise use of that. That's just my understanding, Lisa or Robert could correct me.
No, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but at the same time, we're all, you know, we do often say that like our free cash, you know, is, it, in a way, it kind of ends up being a rainy day fund that we try not to use, you know, if you think about it. Because we, we've saved and now we have money laying around. I mean, you know, if, if you strip it right down, that's kind of what it comes down to. You know, when you could just, you know, when I'm going to pay for this one upfront. Okay, so, so there's that. And then, but then you look at the amounts, even in Article twenty-three, like I said, they're all kind of lined up with one another, my three passes. How much, I have to go, let me get to Article twenty-three here so I can say this correctly. You know, we're voting to transfer seven hundred ninety-five thousand, six hundred and seven thousand dollars to the stabilization fund, but five thousand, six hundred and seven to be, to the stabilization, and the other to be the seven hundred ninety thousand to capital stabilization fund. And, and one of the things that got said last week was, you know, lawsuits and everything like that. If the town got served, you know, had a lawsuit, was sued, if you have the money in stabilization, then they could take that. But at the same time, that's the fund that would pay for any settlement. Putting five thousand dollars into the stabilization seems kind of like a, why bother? When we had scenario two, that kind of at least put like a little over a hundred thousand in stabilization and like six hundred thousand or so into capital. So I, I just feel like maybe our numbers are a little, are a little upside down, and maybe we could balance this a little bit better. And on Article twelve, why not just flat out pay for something out of free cash if we can?
So I know, I think Scott had a comment, and I know Robert, so Scott, do you want to go ahead?
Sure, so Janice, I, on Article eleven, I, I personally think, I think the borrow is the correct way to go for the items in Article eleven. On Article twelve, I do see your point. It, it is money that's worth spending in and out, and, you know, moving that, or changing the wording that from capital stabilization to free cash would simply change the number in Article twenty-three. And then, but we're ending up with the same amount in stabilization as a whole. And regarding the split on capital stabilization, stabilization, I mean, I still prefer to have the lion's share going into capital, but that's, that's my opinion.
And Robert?
Mr. Chairman, just on the overview, because there's three things here. So on Article eleven, the capital budget requests a borrow article. The Capital Planning Committee, every year, spent multiple weeks deliberating over the requests and made specific recommendations. And ultimately, the buck does stop with the Select Board. But just to point out, this was vetted over November, December, January, and the recommendation of the Capital Planning Committee, and a lot of things weren't recommended, were these items under Article eleven, and specifically also that they be borrowed. And they reflect the capital planning policy in the financial policies that generally, items over forty thousand dollars, over that, we generally borrow for. Why do we do that? One, not just because of the favorable borrowing rates, but fortunately, we're in a position to have this discussion tonight and be in the luxury that we have these excess funds. But as Ms. Gabri perhaps knows better than anybody, there were times that the town had nine thousand or twenty thousand dollars in free cash. So as a matter of policy, we've tried to avoid purchasing large items from a limited and unknown resource of free cash. We could be sitting here next year with no free cash. I don't, I hope that's not the case. So I just explain that it's rooted in a policy of anything over forty thousand we have been borrowing, because we have no guarantee with the free cash is going to be. And that's been sort of the recommendation of the Capital Planning Committee. Also, not that long ago, for example, the town, in respectfully my opinion, and I believe the finance manager's opinion several years ago, purchased a fire apparatus outright with free cash to the tune of about a half a million dollars. Again, I think on the case of the borrow on these items, it's been a prudent policy, and that has served us well. Just explaining how this was developed, and again, through the capital, you know, process. On Article twelve, tied into that policy, we've generally had items that were below forty thousand that we would purchase outright from capital stabilization. And again, ultimately, as Select Hood, Selectman Hood, Selectman Livingston mentioned, the decision, you know, ultimately rests again with you. But I just want to point out that this went through the whole, you know, process, and there's a reason that we have been following those policies. Now, lastly, if I may, on Article twenty-three, the stabilization fund. So let's just say independent of Article eleven and twelve for a moment. On twenty-three, on the stabilization, and I do have the slides, but I can put them up if, if the board wants. When, on the stabilization policy, as Ms. Gabri, again, knows better than anybody, at one point, we had the stabilization fund first, and we didn't have over two point six million in it that we do today. And we spent time building that up, and there's a specific policy at that benchmark. And as I mentioned, on March thirty, thirtieth, we've made, we've reached that benchmark, and this isn't the first town meeting. The last three or four annual town meetings has had this sort of split. Why has it had this split? Because we've reached the stabilization threshold, but we're still putting a small amount in. But per previous Select Board, we're trying to ramp up the capital stabilization, which started later, and we're at about two point seven million. So there's two point six million in stabilization, two point seven million in capital, capital stabilization. My final point is, the reason we're ramping up the capital stabilization is most likely, not always, but most likely, an emergency situation is going to be a capital thing. A failure at one of the plants, a huge water main break. But also, as previously discussed, we're ramping up the capital stabilization also in preparation for the future elementary school, the future senior center, and we're trying to ramp that up, because we know that even at two, at even two point seven million in capital stabilization isn't going to buy you an elementary school and maybe not even a senior center. So again, that's sort of the thinking behind it. And lastly, as mentioned, the, at the buy board, I did present three scenarios. Scenario one was this scenario that's in the warrant, and that's why it's in the warrant for discussion tonight. Scenario two looked to put about a hundred thousand in stabilization and about the six hundred and ninety thousand in capital. So it looked, instead of just putting the five thousand, put about a hundred thousand in stabilization and the balance in capital. And then I gave sort of a scenario three, Ms. Gabri and I presented scenario three, which may be in play tonight, I don't know, is of the seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, six oh seven, the total, you could, at the board could put, you know, a different split between the two. But again, I, we're not arbitrarily just coming up with this. It's based on policy, but it's based on a longer vision moving forward for the town. So that's just sort of our explanation. And through the chair, if I may, I know that the finance manager wants to add anything through the chair. If you have any point she wants to add.
Hi, Lisa.
Hi, hi, everyone. Um, I think that I totally agree with Scott, everything Scott said and what Robert said. Obviously, there are different opinions and different routes you could take, but our goal has been to, as far as the stabilization is concerned, our goal, as far as the buy board is concerned for the last few years, is to build up capital stabilization. Our stabilization fund is more than double what our goal was. So it's, it's significant, and, but we know we're going to have these future high-cost infrastructure projects coming down the road. We know there's going to be an elementary school at some point. We know there's going to be a field, possibly a field project at some point, and most possibly a senior center at some point. Those are tens of millions of dollars project, which, which, in order, what if we build that up in order to save the taxpayers? Because it will decrease the debt exclusion that's added to your taxes. Of course, there can be different opinions about how much to put in there, absolutely. And, but I tend to agree with buy board and Scott on this one. As far as the capital, Article eleven, I do believe, as Scott does, that we should borrow for these articles. The interest rates are very extremely favorable right now, and they're not always like that. Two percent, in, two to three percent is incredibly, is incredibly little compared to previous years. And you, but you are right, you are correct about Article twelve. We could just as easily have taken that directly from free cash and changed Article twenty-three to reflect that. Some people think that by putting the amount into capital stabilization and then transferring out, it's more transparent. I mean, that's their opinion. It would certainly save me work if we just took it from free cash. That's all I have to add.
Thank you, Lisa.
Mr. Chair, I just want to explain that I think that the capital planning has always done a wonderful job. I chaired that board myself, and I totally agree with the policies that we have, because they have been working for this town. But I also think it was important to address the question again. And by addressing it here in this public manner, once again, everyone was able to explain it fully so that the public is in the know. So
Absolutely.
I still think maybe we should change the numbers on for Article twenty-three. But I, I agree with everyone, what everyone's saying, but at the same time, I think maybe we should, but we've discussed it, so.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Pauline?
Pauline's iPad.
I, I don't know if I have the opportunity to say anything, because I understand this is a dedicated discussion about the warrant, and there was nothing said whether public could chime in.
I think, well, there were some difficulties with logins today. We had asked for all public input at the beginning, but you go ahead.
And just very briefly, first, I want to thank you all for discussing the point I made to all three of you. Um, I am fine with the borrow article, Article eleven as it is. I still, and I am heartened by Lisa's comment that taking Article twelve from free cash is kind of a wash. As I said, I think I responded to you, Sean, earlier tonight before the meeting. It's basically a wash, it's kind of a backwards procedure I've always questioned, and I'll just leave that at that. You decide and tell, you decide tonight and town meeting decides on the twenty-sixth, and I'll leave it at that. And as for Article twenty-six, uh, I'm sorry, three, twenty-three, where the funds are twenty-two, twenty-three, I've lost track of the numbers, where the numbers are split, same thing. Um, you guys decide what you decide tonight, town meeting will ultimately decide. But in, in all honesty, I can't remember a time, and I will use the regional school, high school, high school as an example, where we actually took money from capital stabilization or regular stabilization to fund that building. Lisa will correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure, and I, I, I will concede to her opinion or to her facts, because I don't remember. But capital stabilization is a great thing. I really, really understand it. I supported it when Selectman refused to create it. So I, I just leave it at that. I have no qualms about the distribution of funds. But why put, why try to take money out on a two-thirds vote when you have it in your pocket? And then put what's left in the stabilization fund? And, and that's my only point. It's a backwards procedure, and I just end with that. And I thank you for letting me go on about this for three meetings.
Thank you so much.
All right, talk to you later.
All right, hi, Lisa, yes.
Hi, just to clarify, we did not have anywhere near a significant balance in capital stabilization when the high school was built, it wasn't even close. So we're with, and we've been aggressively building it up since then. That's it.
Thank you. I do, so are we okay on these three articles? I know there is another person on who he was unable to log in earlier. And I just want to give him a chance, it's on the Trevor Trail. Hi, Rob?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, hi. I mean, just so that you are aware ahead of time, the board did vote on it earlier, but if you want to go ahead and comment, that's.
Yeah, I saw that in the, in the text that I sent back and forth to Cindy, so thanks for listening to me. The, yeah, the letter I got in the mail didn't indicate that it was a Zoom meeting, so I, I thought maybe it was back to being at the town hall. So I drove there at six and the doors were locked. So, so Susan gave me the, the ability to log in, I guess I was too late. The, when, when, my question was, when, I got, I got a couple, but I'll try to be brief. When the, when the, when the approval was, was done, does that approve the entire Pleasant Street Extension, including the two new cul-de-sacs? Or does it end where the road hasn't been redone towards the new cul-de-sac, the second one?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Rob.
Through you, the town engineer is still on.
Yep, this, oh, sorry. Yeah, this is Dan. No, it's just where the road's been redone. It's, it's the single cul-de-sac of Trevor Trail and then a portion of Pleasant Street Extension.
Okay, so do you have a, the, I, I re, I received something, I received something recent, you know, about a year ago from the conservation that showed where the trees were going to go for the, for the Pleasant Street Extension and Trevor Trail, and it shows a few of them on the Pleasant Street beyond where you just mentioned that isn't approved yet. So, did you, did you guys, did you guys look at that when you approved it? And I'm just wondering if I have the latest one.
If it's the phase two portion, which isn't up for acceptance, we didn't look down there, but there are, yes, some street trees that are in, in the punch list that you have to install, correct?
So in the phase one that, that we're talking about that ends at Trevor Trail, there are five trees that go on the right-hand side as you're going, heading towards the new development? And that's on the Pleasant Streets extension side prior to Trevor Trail?
I'd be glad to look at it, I think you're right, yeah.
So currently, what they have there now is, they have three trees on the area that's beyond where it's going to be approved. And there's only two that are in the area that show five on the plan. So I'm working tomorrow. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we bought the lot expecting that those trees would be, in fact, there. So I, I just wanted to make sure that the trees are going to be there. And then, another question is that, when you, when you're coming from Trevor Trail entering Pleasant Street, there are four circles there, I don't know what that is, is that?
Entering Pleasant.
So if you're going, if you're going from the new Trevor Trail and you're taking a left on Pleasant, heading to downtown?
Yes.
There's four very tight circles that are maybe around the transformer that- There's four very tight circles that are maybe around the transformer that's right there. And I was just wondering also if that was something that was part of the plan to have some kind of shrubbery there to hide the tran-. There's a kind of a good-sized transformer right there.
Um, I'm not sure, I know there was some spare conduit they had to tear up, I'd have to or ta- or remove. I'd have to go look at at what those circles are, talk to CJ Moore.
Yeah, they they look. They look like they're smaller circles, but I think CJ is probably gonna be here tomorrow, he was here today, but I wasn't here, I was working. So, again, I just, okay, I'll leave it, I'll try to make it so I don't hold everybody up. At the town meeting, when this gets a final approval, then CJ is done with the Pleasant Street Extension up to Trevor Trail and including Trevor Trail. Is that correct?
Correct.
So will will, when that happens, will there be a picture that will be displayed to to do that final approval? So that everybody that's at the meeting can speak, if there's something that's on the plan that isn't on the street?
Um, yeah, so we'll have the meets and bounds plans, those are um at the town clerk's office. Um, I don't have an official picture, but we do have a punch list that's based off of um the work he was supposed to do that, you know, that he's finishing up now. So basically, the DPW would indicate whether he completed the punch list or not.
Right, so again, I'm kind of new to the meeting, this this meeting that's gonna happen at the high school. I I I plan to attend, so if the meets and bounds show something and then the as-built real reality isn't, isn't there. It is, it isn't showing, do we have the opportunity to to challenge the approval at that time?
Right, yeah, yeah, you can vote it down.
Yeah, and I, look. I don't want to give the guy a hard time, I know it's been a challenge for him. Um, I just want to make sure that what is on the plan is what gets built, because once it gets approved, it's too late.
Exactly, and that's what we want to, yeah.
So I encourage you, if, when you have the time. Um, to just drive down with the plan in your hands if you could. Um, again, I know this is a tiny, tiny thing compared to your massive budget, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me.
Yep, um, Rob, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Sorry, Dan, I was gonna say, Rob, also, you can um connect with Dan, like, at his office or through, you know, through phone. If um, if you have additional questions, you may be able to answer more completely.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Yeah, I'll do, I'll just do that, that's, I'll just talk directly to Dan prior to the meeting, is that okay?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Dan, thanks so much.
Okay, thanks, Rob, yeah.
Great, thank you, Rob, thanks for coming back on, Dan. Okay, so um. Any more questions on the warrant before we, I guess, approve, final approval on it? Mister Chair, just so. Yep, Janice?
Oh, I just have a couple of explanatory notes that I think might need tweaking.
Okay.
You want to talk to Robert or you want?
So I would, so procedurally, what I was gonna recommend, Mister Chairman, is that at this point, if the FINCOM. You know, generally wants to, as you see on the warrant where it says Finance Committee. Usually, they, you know, either recommends, does not recommend to report at town meetings. If they want to take any votes on any of the financial articles, obviously specifically Article Four. Um, they respectfully should do that through a a motion for the record. And maybe there are some that they they don't, and then, of course, then we can come back to the board, final discussion, you know, for approval. Okay. Okay, do you want to go ahead and do that, or Janice, did you want to share your explanatory notes first?
Yeah, why don't we do that, that way when we approve it, we'll have said whether or not we're approving the explanatory notes.
Perfect, sounds good.
Um, so, Article twenty-one, it is just a recommendation to add, is it? Yep, okay, it is Article twenty-one. Um, as far as the explanatory note to, you know, maybe cite an example like, I mean, I know it's, because it says. That it's to do future payments and recruit liability for compensated absences due to employees of the Town of Air upon termination of their employment. So um, the word termination kind of can, kind of sounds negative. To put in the explanatory note as an example, like compensated absences could include like retirements not previously known. Um, just to kind of clear that up. Because we we found that the notes do help, so that would, that would be my recommendation to to tweak, to add that on. Um, Article twenty-six is the TIF. My recommendation would be to add to the note that the public hearing, public forum. Was conducted on the date that it was conducted and that, you know, this was videotaped, it can be found at. So, because people might not know right now about it next week. But at least when they're reading the notes, they might know where to go to look for the information, so that would be my recommendation. For Article twenty-seven, because I know we did have a little confusion, we were talking about it last week. So it would be my recommendation to clearly kind of, even, I mean, we can look at the explanatory note and say, well, it's saying what we. We think it needs to say, but it's my recommendation that maybe perhaps we clearly state that without the. You know, that we have to have this approval, or the process does not start. You know, to really kind of clear that up, saying, you know, otherwise, there's some confusion because of the part where, you know, we're going to do the due diligence. It could confuse people, so by at least clearing up that, you know, we can't do anything unless town meeting says, yes, you can start the process. As to clearing up that note. And then I didn't, and then I think that's it for the notes.
Mister Chairman, unless there's objection from the select board, we can, we will make those changes to the explanatory notes. Um, I have no objections.
None at all.
We'll make those changes. Okay. Okay, so then if um, we want to go ahead to the um, fin- finance committee?
And and you, and just to be clear, you're looking for the finance committee to. So I think recommendation on all the articles.
On the ones that.
Every article, one by one. Um, I'll look for a, I'll look for a uh, a motion on each one and take a vote on each one.
Robert. Just a point of clarification for Mister Smith, it would be all of the financial articles. So the budget, all of the financial ones.
Correct, everyone that says Finance Committee.
Yeah.
Colon.
Yeah.
So article, starting with Article One.
Do we need to do each one, Robert?
Um, it it the past, the FINCOM could do a motion if there is a motion to recommend all of the financial articles. So you don't have to go through each one of them. It's the purview of the FINCOM.
So Mark or Lou, did you have any problems with any of the articles as I read?
I I do not have any problem with any of them.
I don't take any issue with any of the articles.
Okay, so Sarah Harbaugh, we at the Finance Committee accept the um, recommendation of approving the financial. Uh, articles that we're responsible to. Second. Get a second.
I'll, I'll second.
Uh, I'll ask for all in favor by roll call. Lou Conrad.
Lou says yes.
Terry Harbaugh.
Terry Harbaugh says yes.
And Mark Smith, Vice Chair of FINCOM says yes.
Thank you, guys. Then, um, do we have any further discussion on um, Janice?
So quick question, um, before the board makes a um, a uh, motion. Are we just doing Articles One through, what, how many do we have, thirty-one?
Thirty-two.
Uh, whether or not we want to do something for the petition article?
Um, yeah, Kim, yeah. So.
Can you start, sorry, go ahead, Robert.
I was just gonna say, Selectman Livingston's question, so obviously, the board would need to approve the special town meeting warrant, which is that one article. And then there's the annual town meeting warrant, which is Articles One through thirty-two. And then the petition article, because the process has been followed, that has to go on the warrant. But the select board may choose to take a position or no position. I think that's what Selectman Livingston's asking on the petition article. So you'll see where it says Select Board colon, we left it blank. Okay.
Robert, if, sorry, Sean, um, Mister Chair, um, generally, in the past on petition articles. Um, the select board and the finance committee have never taken positions on them. Uh, I know this is a little different because it's related to the regional school district as opposed to a normal citizen's petition. Uh, I just want to kind of put that out there for the rest of the select board, if we feel we want to continue that with this type of petition. Or um, give a vote of recommendation or not recommendation, um, because it's a petition related to the regional school district.
Janice thoughts?
Well, to to clarify what what Scott said, previous petitions have been pretty much that even if town meet approved them. It was going to be under advisement, it would be, there would be advisory petitions, which is why the board didn't uh, really take a stand on it. Okay, but in this case, this is, could cause a direct change. Um, if town meeting approves, so I I think that he is correct what he's saying, but, you know, that's the way the petitions were before. Um, versus what this one is now, um, that does have severe ramifications. Because if this one's approved, it goes to, it automatically goes to the next level.
Okay, no, that's fine, then, um, that's a good explanation, thank you.
Um, okay, so. I'll entertain a motion.
Um, Mister Chair, it's Pauline, side panel again.
Yes.
Um, just very briefly, I have tried to understand what this petition article is about. Even looking at the draft warrant that was posted for your meeting tonight, which I do not have in front of me, I'm sorry. And I have not gone to the regional school agreement, but I plan to before April twenty-sixth. I think as a select, a selectman for the Town of Air. I I, well, let me say it this way, who from the school committee from the Town of Air is going to explain this? It's not, uh, it's not the selectman's responsibility, because we have a regional school committee. And I appreciate Robert's explanation last meeting that, you know, anyone can, a- a- any member of the school committee can put this on the warrant in either town. And I agree that that was a correct explanation, but people are just not gonna understand this. Failing is probably and uh, not a good thing. But I I I would hope that in the next couple of weeks, you'll line someone up to at least speak to it at town meeting. Mister Quinty, won't he need unanimous approval?
Yes, he would.
Yeah.
Correct.
Which means we want a backup for air, who doesn't?
Um, so um, to answer you, so I have Robert and um, Mrs. Copeland. Oh, and this is, this is public information. And and so this is very unique, because A, we've never had a a change to the regional agreement done by the petition. Method, let the record also reflect, and you can find this, that the regional school committee does not support this change. Because if they did, it would have originated from them, and I'll get the meaning of the date. When Mister Quinty, who is a Shirley resident and a member of the committee representing Shirley, breached, brought this issue up. With the regional school committee, they didn't want anything to do with it. So the regional school committee, including our air representatives, and I'm not gonna speak for them, but based on that meeting, are not in support of this. Um, additionally, so the the conundrum is, it has, the process has been followed, it's on the warrant. We've never had this before, as mentioned, Mister Quinty, as a Shirley resident, would need unanimous consent to speak. As would the, anybody that, every signature that was certified is a Shirley resident. Let, there is not one air resident on this petition. So it's strange in that sense that it's originating in air, because the Shirley Town Meeting is next month. So as far as a presentation on what the actual change would be, that's, you know, again. It's an interesting conundrum in that sense, I mean, obviously, town council will also be present, that can explain. Um, as I did, the difference between section N and subsection D. But it's interesting, there is, the school committee, unless they've changed their position, which they haven't had another meeting. Does not support this change, because it normally would come from them.
Then.
Thank you, I'm sorry, thank you, Robert, I, Sean, I I I'm happy to hear that. Because I've struggled to find actual data or information, because it's been very quiet. This, you know, we all are on that air community page, and we all see things on social media. And this, it's been totally silent, and I've been frustrated by that experience, because I'm trying to learn and understand. But I'm happy to know all of what was just said, and of course, there's an election coming up shortly after town meeting. So thank you for letting me ask the question and.
And I think, um, I think that Mrs. Copeland, did you have something more to add to that?
No, I just want to reiterate exactly what Robert was saying, and it needs to be said. Um, unfortunately, we don't have the vehicle, because it is a very odd situation. This is a resident who happens to be on a committee that has started this petition. Um, it is unique in the fact that it is surely residents that have signed this petition, so would need town meeting approval for anybody. From Shirley to speak at the air town meeting, either for or against this. Um, but I also want to just, um, one point um, that Pauline made is that the community page is a community page. It's not the towns page.
Right.
So town information would be in the towns page, so, and I, I'm not in the community page, so. But I would just, that's why there's no information out there.
And thank, thank, oh, sorry, Susan, thank you so much for clarifying that, because I want to make sure that the air voters. Know what this is all about.
Yeah, and that's why we have the opportunity now, and in fact, um, so the last um, school committee meeting is where the vote was taken. And um, it was not voted, um, therefore, their minutes aren't even being approved till tonight, actually, right now simultaneously. So the information probably won't even be updated for another week or so online. So it's like a cat and mouse sort of game or chase that we're trying to, you can't get information that hasn't been gone through the vetted processes. Um, but the fact that we can talk about it um, now and make everybody aware of it now. But it's it's hard, because it's not an official, it's a citizen's petition. Um, it's very odd in this regional situation, but I just wanted to reiterate what Robert was saying, that it's not. Um, there's no oper- it's the only opportunity is for the non-resident to be approved to speak.
Thank you, and Robert? Mister Chair, just one final thing through you and the select board, and it would be your decision in your purview, and it's just a suggestion. But your next meeting is on April twentieth, um, the select, select board could, if it wanted to extend a formal invitation. To the Air Shirley Regional School District School Committee, at minimum, the air representatives, um, or the whole committee. And if the board wanted to do that, we could set that up and post it and have the, a public discussion with the school committee, not required. It's just a suggestion, I appreciate Susan mentioning, once we get those minutes. Um, she is correct that it is on record that the school committee um, does not support this and voted accordingly. But it's something that the board, if you want to consider for your meeting on the twentieth, inviting the school committee um, to have the discussion. Just a suggestion, not a requirement, okay?
And and Mister Chair, if I may, as a resident, I would totally, totally support having that request made. Um, I I I just don't think, I I think people are gonna be caught blind by this. And um, I don't know if that's good or bad, but as Janice mentioned last meeting. It's more important to give people the information, let them decide, and this is a really good. And this is a really good example of where that information is very, very important.
Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so the, are we at the approval stage now for the warrant?
I believe we are.
Okay.
Petition question, but okay.
So, sorry, Sean, go ahead.
No, you, you know better than I do.
So, sorry, it was my understanding we were going to approve the special town meeting warrant than Articles 1 through 32 on the annual town meeting and then circle back on discussion for the petition article.
That's, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. So I can entertain a motion on the special town meeting.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board approve the special town meeting warrant as presented.
I will second.
Okay. Board Member Livingston, how do you vote?
I.
And Board Member Hood, how do you vote?
I.
And the Chair votes aye. So the special town meeting warrant is approved as presented. And then I'll entertain a motion for the annual town meeting warrant.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual town meeting warrant, Articles 1 through 32 as presented, I'm sorry, with the amended notes or explanation notes from select person Livingston. There's a mouthful.
I didn't know what he was going to call me for a second there.
Okay, Board Member Hood, how do you vote?
I.
Board Member Livingston, how do you vote?
I.
And the Chair votes aye to the motion. Not going to repeat all that.
You got it.
Okay, and then let's circle back to the petition and discussion on that.
So, Mr. Chair, my, my concern is, one, not only, please excuse the dog. Not only is the, this a very confusing thing, but I'm very concerned about the fact that the school committee themselves do not want this. I, I, if, Robert, is there a way you can like tell us they, if this is voted yes, but, please excuse the dog. If this is approved by both towns, what is the pros or cons? And let me see if I can take her.
So just, so the, this, the article that, this petition article, as it appears on this warrant, will also appear exactly as is on the Shirley Town Meeting warrant, which is next month. They go after us. If the article passes, the petition article passes our Town Meeting by simple majority vote, and it passes in Shirley by simple majority vote, then the change is approved. But it does have to go to the Commissioner of Education, just like our bylaws go to the Attorney General for final approval. So it's important to note that it has to pass both Town Meetings. So if it doesn't pass on April 26 in Air, though it's still on the warrant in Shirley and passes in Shirley, it's dead. It has to pass in both, both towns, which makes it a unique predicament as we discussed. The school committee, as the Town Clerk has confirmed, and we'll get the minutes, does not support the change. Obviously, Mr. Quinty, as a member, did, but the, the other members did not, and we can get those minutes. And again, this is just the, the explanation that I made before in talking with Town Council, and Town Council will also be at Town Meeting just to speak to the substantive difference. So it looks to amend the manner in which the school committee can incur debt. And it specifically, you see in Chapter 71, Section 16, and then there are two little letters, a little N, Section N, and a little section D. We currently use the little section N. The regional agreement uses little N, which means the school committee votes to incur debt on large projects. And then it goes to a ballot in each town. It's sort of called the election method. What the petition seeks to do is to strike subsection N and go to the little D method, the subsection D. And what does that do? Is, as we understand it, the school committee, again, would vote to incur the debt, but it does not go to an election. Within seven days of the school committee voting, they have to notify the Select Board in both towns within seven days that they, this vote passed. And then from the date of the vote of the school committee, the day they vote to incur the debt, a 60-day clock starts. So within 60 days from the school committee vote, either town has an opportunity, if it chooses to call a Town Meeting, to disapprove of that debt. So if the school committee hypothetically voted tonight to incur debt for some project, they have a clock, a 60-day clock starts from that vote. And within seven days, they'd have to notify you and your counterparts in Shirley. And then if the 60 days pass and nothing happens, then the debt can be incurred. But within those 60 days, if one of the towns calls a Town Meeting to disapprove of the debt, and the Town Meeting votes by a simple majority to disapprove the debt, the school committee can't incur the debt. So that's, if you will, just looking at this, and it reads like stereo instructions, and I don't mean any disrespect like that. That's just a reading of it. Nobody has, I have not asked, and perhaps as another consideration of the board, Mr. Quinty, to my knowledge, this is just my knowledge, has not clearly articulated the reasoning behind this petition. So there's also a lot of speculation right now as to, okay, why do we want, why would we want to change it? And frustratingly, we don't have those answers.
I have a question through the Chair.
Yes. I was like, who's speaking?
So, Robert, does that mean there would not be an election required in either town?
Correct, if it changes. So under Section N, it requires an election. That's the system we've always used. That's from the beginning. But think of the fields and other things. It's an election. If it changes to Section D, there's no election. But what it does instead is the school committee still votes to incur the debt. A 60-day clock starts. They, they have seven days to notify both Select Boards. And during that 60-day period, one of the towns could call a Town Meeting to disapprove of the debt. And if that vote passes, whether it was an Air Shirley to disapprove the debt, then they can't incur the debt, and you go back to the, back to the process.
So I have a follow-up comment. If, I know that I'm not an Air taxpayer, but if I were, I would prefer it to go through an election. I think you get a broader spectrum of people coming to vote for it. And I think that's more meaningful.
So, Robert, also, I, now if both towns called a special town meeting, and one town voted in favor and one town voted against, does it fail? Or?
Yes.
Okay, that's.
So into Ms. Gabri's point, and that's her professional opinion, and I tend to agree. And this is just my opinion for the record. The current N system, I would argue, my opinion, is the most democratic system because it puts it to an election in both towns. Also, Section D creates the scenario where the school committee votes to incur debt, and one of the towns could stop that, stop that debt through a Town Meeting. And as we know, Town Meeting is a much smaller segment, you know, of the public. But again, we don't know what the intent, I can't say, it hasn't been articulated with the intent of the petitioner is, that's just the, the two processes that we're explaining.
Janice?
So, so yeah, based on what Robert said, and I, I hope I followed along correctly. So if the school committee has seven days to notify a Select Board, that can be problematic depending on, because in order for them to meet that seven days, they've got to hurry up and meet to have a discussion so that they can notify us. So that becomes a problem. So if they don't meet within that town, does that open another window that, that, you know, kind of drives whatever is trying to be driven? And then you have, a town would have like the 60-day window to have a Town Meeting, and that can be problematic trying to even set those up. So does that then open this other avenue to where something happening? And you're right. I mean, we love Town Meeting. Town Meeting is the clear democratic way, but so are, so is elections. And with the added benefit of keeping it the way it is with elections, you're scheduling election, you know, a little further out, I think, than the 60-day window. I could be incorrect on that. I've forgotten what the window is. That's, the Town Clerk would always let us know. But then you have the opportunity to maybe, you know, get something more up and running, to get the info out there to the people, and then you do get, you know, more people. So I, I really do have a problem with this petition. And you're right, it's not clearly stated as to why, you know, somebody wants to do this. But it, it, it doesn't feel like it's a benefit. So.
Do you know, Robert, do you know when, when this was originally written as it is now, with the small d and the small n?
Yes, so.
Was the, I'm sorry, well, was the intention of having the two different, you may not know, but the two different avenues, more of a timing thing? So if something came up in that two-month period, you know, that two-month period that required the, the debt be incurred and couldn't wait until Town Meeting? I mean, until the vote?
So, as everyone knows, the region went into effect on July 1 of 2011. So leading into regionalization, this was in the regional agreement. This was the, the little N. That was the system adopted through regionalization. And it's the system that's existed for 10, 10 years. That doesn't mean it can't be changed. Again, this is my opinion. Others would probably disagree with it in conversations I've had. The little N is the election method. And if you think about it, it is the large, it is the more, not that, not that little D isn't democratic either, but an election system, as Janice has said, the Town Clerk, elections capture them. And it can be frustrating at times depending where you are, but captures the largest potential over the Town, Town Meeting system. So, again, it's unclear what the intent of the petitioner is, which is frustrating. Also, the school committee didn't support it, and then the petition happened. And lastly, just for everybody's benefit, the petition as is in the warrant is exactly how it was submitted. That's enough. The explanatory note is the Town of Air's note, but the actual petition, we have to print it exactly as it was submitted, which this is how it was submitted to Ms. Copeland with everything. So as you can see, there's not a lot of explanation there.
Yeah. Scott, did you have, I'd say, raise?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just simply say, my interpretation, I know we don't know the why, but the school committee member Quinty has been at odds with the rest of the school committee. And since they don't support this article, my interpretation is this is another attempt to either stymie the ability for the school committee to actually invest in the regional school district or allow, to be blunt, allow voters in Shirley or people in Shirley to have greater control over the purse strings, which will, in my opinion, have a direct negative impact on the Town of Air and our desire to invest in certain items of education. You know, the field project, I think, is a perfect example where, you know, Air approved the vote the first time around on the first iteration of the project. It's gone through two other iterations since then. And even with a vote coming up in the next month or two, you know, there's still a feeling of uneasiness as to whether that's going to pass. And a lot of that is the individual who was the originator of this petition working against the committee that he sits on. So I, just, this just stinks for the people of Air. I mean, without any real due diligence on why the process needs to be changed, vetted through the school committee, presented by Air members of the school committee, there's no way that we should support this or honestly, anyone in the Town of Air should support this.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Janice, any other thoughts on it or?
No, I think, I think we're all in agreement.
Yeah. Okay. So do we take a motion on this also, right, as to whether it's, okay.
And Mr. Chair, it's Pauline. Before you do that.
Sure.
I, I just want to chime in as a resident who was here when we went to regional school agreement, and Scott was here. And Scott, you'll remember, there were a number of discussions and meetings about the borrowing provisions of the agreement. And if you will remember, Town Council and School Committee Council haggled over those, that language for a long, long time. And it was finally approved because truthfully, I think people don't understand it. But this, this particular change, I will agree with all of you, is very, shall I use the word dangerous right now, given what is coming forward? And, and I encourage and thank you for not supporting it. I'm, I'm happy to hear that the regional school committee is not supporting it. I haven't talked with any of them, but I, I'm very concerned by it. And I think most Air residents will be when they hear about it. So to see that the Select Board is not going to support it will probably have the end result we are all hoping for. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So with that, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'll make a motion that the Select Board not recommend the petition article.
I will second.
Okay. Board Member Livingston, how do you vote?
I.
Board Member Hood, how do you vote?
I.
And the Chair votes aye, and the board will not recommend the petition article as presented.
So, Mr. Chairman, just as a point of information for everybody's benefit. So then on the petition article, as you see it, it says "Sponsored by Petition." Where it says "Select Board," it will say "Does not recommend" by roll call vote, 3 to 0 in today's date, just so there's the reference.
Okay.
Okay.
And I do think, I don't know about the other two members, but I do think your idea of inviting somebody from the school committee to our next meeting would be wise. Just even for informational purposes for any resident.
Is.
I agree.
Yeah.
Is there consensus on that from the board? Would you, I, we can, do you want me to, do you want, does the board want to invite the whole committee, the Air representatives, or whoever can come for April 20?
I would say the more, the better. I mean, you know, if we can only get one individual, that's fine. But if we can get majority of the Air contingency, that would be even better.
I agree.
Okay. Yeah. I'm in favor of inviting the whole board.
Okay, we will do that.
All right. And so that, with that, we're on to you again, Robert, for your Town Manager's Report.
So just in the interest of time, because in terms of the administrative update, it's all things budget, all things Town Meeting. You have the warrants approved since the board last met on March 30 in your packet. Unless there's any questions on administrative matters, I'll just go to the COVID preparedness update. Again, our COVID preparedness remains status quo, which is a good thing, meaning all of our ongoing efforts over the last almost 13 months during the pandemic. As many of you noted, the Town of Air was reclassified last Thursday by the DPH community metrics. We went back to red from yellow. The good news is the ASRSD schools went back to full in-person learning as of April 5. And in talking with the superintendent Monday and today, went off very well. So that's a positive step. The Town Hall has delayed. We had planned for April 5 to start the Phase 1 in-person appointments at the Town Hall. We've delayed that to April 12. The reason for that delay, to be clear, is from that time we have had two positive confirmed COVID cases at the Town Hall. In addition, related to those, we've had some confirmed. In addition, related to those, we've had some con- con- confirmed close contacts. So we're just, um, again, all protocols are being followed, um, it just impacted us unexpectedly. As of April fifth, meaning yesterday, we started with the outdoor appointments, many have, probably have seen the tent. Um, system, if you need to meet with somebody, just give us a ca- a call at nine seven eight, seven seven two, eight two two zero. Extension one hundred, or call a department, it's a completely, um, contactless system that is. Um, sanitized after each use, it's outdoors, uh, the weather at least today has been good. So we appreciate the community's patience on that, we're gonna reassess for April twelfth. Uh, again, to stress, we are committed to reopening, in reopening in a safe and responsible method. Not just for our employees' health and well-being, but for the public at large. Additionally, Parks and Rec are moving forward with their plans, following protocols. And as will the Library Board of Trustees, and of course, with the senior center, uh, we're putting together some plans too. So if there are any questions or concerns about the reopening, please contact me. Um, in thirteen months, I have not heard from anybody, needs not being met, we want needs to be met. But we appreciate the understanding during the pandemic, and we are moving in the right direction. We just had this little bit of, of a, of a hiccup there, so I will keep the board updated and we'll keep the public, um, updated. So with that, Mr. Chair, in the interest of time, that's all I had for the report this evening.
Great, thank you, um, there was no new business or select.
So, yeah, I just ask a quick, uh, COVID-related question. Um, Robert, has any of the restaurants in town reached out about possibly, um, going back to outdoor dining anytime soon?
Excellent question, thank you, uh, Selectman Hood, uh, I'll add that to the update, the answer to that to the board is yes. So, we have been approached by Bar, uh, twenty-five to do their, um, outside street dining. And, uh, we are putting that plan together with a tentative date around April sixteenth. Um, using the Jersey barriers and so forth, so Bar twenty-five, we have a meeting tomorrow with Marcos on Main. Who wants to do what they did last year, um, and we're working with them on that. And those are the two at this time, um, as the board is probably where the, the Neshoba Club is under new, um, ownership. And I know informally that some interest of doing something there, so we will continue to work with any business. And that's the policy of this board, and this board has been very supportive, we will work with any, um, establishment. Um, on outdoor dining, uh, under the COVID nineteen protocols, uh, to, to make it successful. So I'm, I'm glad, uh, Selectman Hood, you brought that up, so Bar twenty-five, um, looking at April sixteenth. Marcos on Main, we have a meeting tomorrow, they're looking to do it, and again, if there are other establishments, please contact us. And we will work with them, and we'll keep the board and the public updated.
Is, is there any action that the board needs to take regarding the liquor licenses?
Not at this, at this time.
Robert, I can weigh in too, if you'd like, um, the, the order that the governor issued last year, basically. Um, as long as the state of emergency is in effect, they can do this outdoor dining with no permanent change to their. Uh, liquor license, um, technically, if they do their same layouts, they can still operate under last year's permit. Because it's contingent upon the, the state of emergency, and then it's like, I think forty-five or sixty days. After the state of emergency ends, um, they can still do this, and then moving forward, once we're out of COVID and. It, you know, if they wanted to make a permanent alteration to their license to do outdoor seating, that would have to come formally before the select board. But they're still covered right now under the state of emergency.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott, um, no other new business or select four questions?
No.
Okay, um, okay, so then that brings us to approval of meeting minutes from the March sixteenth. Any changes?
I didn't have any.
I have no changes.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes as presented.
So moved.
Okay, uh, Board Member Hood, how do you vote?
Aye.
Board Member Livingston, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, um, that concludes our open session, so if the FinCon would like to adjourn from their meeting first?
I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the FinCon.
It is terrible, I move that we adjourn the sixth April Finance Committee meeting at eight oh five.
I'll second that, Lou Conrad.
Uh, by roll call, take a vote. Lou, Conrad?
Aye.
Terry Harbell?
Aye.
And the Vice Chair, Mark Smith, says aye.
Great, thank you guys so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you gentlemen. Nice.
Thank you a lot for the civic lessons.
There was many perks this evening.
I appreciate it, it was good stuff, good stuff, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Uh, yep.
I'd like to make a motion, the select board move into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one. Exemption three, union contract negotiations, police patrol and dispatch contract MOAs. To do so in an open meeting would be detrimental to the town's negotiating strategy. And that the board will adjourn immediately after, um, the executive session.
I will second.
All right, Board Member Livingston, how do you vote?
Aye.
Board Member Hood, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, thank you for joining everybody, we're now in executive session.